The rules or procedure adopted annually to ensure productive meeting. The select board minutes meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning that the members in the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment. But the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure posted in the town hall are available for everyone to review. Thank you.
Okay, so members in attendance tonight, we have Bob, Mike, Jessica, Tom, and Rich, and I'm Kristen. And we've got some people here online tonight. Julian, I've got everybody who's here in person also signed in. So just one addition, which I don't know if you are all ready to talk about tonight, but there was an email that came through from the nature conservancy about the proposed purchase, the land purchase of the Moore property. Did everybody get a chance to see that?
Yes.
Did you want to speak about that tonight?
Sure, we'll bring it up on our whole business.
Or I put that on your new business, I figure. Is that old?
That's, well, we talked about it a little bit already and voted on it, but we can, it doesn't matter.
So it'll come up later in the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Wherever you have it scheduled will be fine.
Okay. Then the minutes that need approval tonight are from our last regular meeting of February 4th.
I'll move through those minutes.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, carry. Um, the agenda, do we still need executive session tonight? I didn't.
I don't know. Didn't?
Does that carry over from last?
That carried over from last. Did we not need that anymore?
I don't, I don't have any reason.
Okay, so we can remove executive session for tonight.
I guess Mark has got the floor whenever...
Mark, you have the floor whenever you're ready.
Hello, everyone. Uh, I am here to give you a quick, I, uh, a quick demo on the camera system or if you have any questions you might have. I don't know if I have permission to share my screen here.
Yep, I'll give you permission.
Uh, yep, I do. Uh, so stand by. And, uh, the cameras we are proposing are Ubiquity Unified Protect Cameras. Uh, are you able to see my screen now?
Not yet. Uh, hold on one sec, let's see. I'm going to make you a co-host.
Okay.
Alright, you should be able to share it now.
Okay.
Alright. Can you guys see that okay?
Well, I can see.
Up here.
Oh, and up there too. Alright. Okay, we're good.
Okay, so, um, this is a local residence and I chose this residence, I do have permission to show you these cameras, by the way. Um, this is the particular camera here that I, uh, that I put on the quote for the town to be able to view the, uh, the conditions of the roads in front of the, uh, uh, town hall. Uh, as you can see, um, it's got quite a bit of clarity. Uh, this is the same model, however, this particular camera has an IR enhancer as well as a additional floodlight which illuminates on motion. Uh, another example I can give you, um, which I have gives permission as well, um, which I think would be a very good, um, uh, example of what you would see. So, um, at Max Market, be very similar, right down the street, you get a good view of the road. Um, of course, all the recordings get kept, so we can go to the, uh, you get the front door camera, and then basically, you're able to scroll through all the recordings and, and view all the recordings. Now, I know this is primarily for the, I think, your road crew to view the roads, but it could be used for other purposes as well. Uh, this camera that we've proposed to use also does, um, license plate recognition. So, it would basically, if you choose to, um, we could capture license plates as they pass by, uh, the, in front of the town hall. Um, any, any question, you know, that's, that's primarily, uh, the gist of it, the cameras work very well, we've had, uh, really good luck with them, uh, we've had them out at the rec center in Manchester for over five years, we've had very few failures. Uh, we have them at the Manchester Police Department inside and out, town hall inside and out in Manchester. Um, they love the camera system. We also have deployed this camera system around town at other locations, for instance, the Manchester Laundromat. Manchester Laundromat has asked us to share their video with the police department. And when the police department's on the same system, it's seamless for us to share that with the police department. They can actually bring it up in their dispatch room. Uh, just, just saying, uh, just explaining the features of the system, not necessar- necessarily that you have to use these features, just letting you know the capabilities of the system. Um, again, it does, it does recognition, it does facial recognition, it does vehicle recognition, um, it does license plate recognition, so you can ask the camera, "Show me every time you saw a red car," and it would bring up all the red cars that it has on its footage. Now, the, the, the storage system that we proposed was a one, uh, a one terabyte hard drive, all the video is kept onsite, not on the cloud. Every user gets their own account, they can bring up the system, uh, on their phones individually, they can set alerts for motion individually on their phones, um, they can view the cameras at any time, from anywhere, um, from a laptop or phone with an account, um, as long as they have an internet connection. I cannot hear you guys.
Nope, we're just not talking. We're not talking.
No, it's not anything.
We're listening.
Okay, are there any questions I can answer for you?
I do.
Uh, Tom Collard has a question for you, Mark.
Mark, thanks for showing us this tonight. What is, uh, days that that recording will stay saved? Is it seven days, 30 days?
So, uh, typically on one, with one camera on one terabyte, I would suspect, uh, it depends on the camera settings, whether we're recording all of the time, uh, which oftentimes we'll do with only a single camera, because there's plenty of storage, so we'll, we'll record basically 24/7. Um, in that scenario, you'd probably get about a month's worth of recordings. If you did, um, record on motion only, uh, you would probably get up to, I would say, three months, perhaps a little more.
Thank you.
And as you add cameras, obviously, that, that timeframe would reduce.
Yeah, were we thinking of two cameras, one for Paulette and one for West Paulette? Would they have the same storage system then, or would they each have a storage?
Uh, yes, they, so they would have the same, uh, unfortunately, you have to have a storage system at every site that you have cameras, so, um, if you were still considering doing something in West Paulette as well, it would basically be, uh, the same exact system over there. Um, I would, we, we never made it over there, Kristen, to do a site survey, so I just had to completely see the, see what you have, what you have, uh, what the cable routing options are, but I would suspect that it's, it would be very similar.
Frank?
I didn't think it really needed storage, because the highway department was just going to be looking at real time, uh, what the road situation was, and they were wanting to know possibly what the temperature of the road was. Oops.
So sorry.
Um, yeah, I thought that the purpose was for real time viewing of the roads without needing to have storage, and that they would want to see what the temperature was of the, of the road for determination of icing and, and that type of thing. So you wouldn't need to have storage in that case, because you just, you want to see it, you wouldn't need...
Well, yeah, unfortunately, the cameras won't operate without the storage device, and that is the smallest storage device that we offer currently. Uh, all of our other units get larger. And we have this exact same unit with a two terabyte, three terabyte, four, five, uh, and then we have large units that go up to, you know, 30, 40, 50 terabytes.
Is it solid state storage?
Uh, on this particular unit, yes it is.
I think one of the questions, Mark, too, that everybody had was pricing. So, um, I know that you and I discussed different options in terms of what the pricing structures could be depending on what our needs were, so would you be able to elaborate on that a bit?
Uh, yeah, so like, I'm not sure I understand your question, but, um, could you rephrase that? Um, right now, the current quote, um, that I gave was for a one terabyte, uh, storage, uh, um, unit, which is also, also runs the Protect application...
Yep.
...which the cameras talk to. There was a, there was an AI crow, professional, uh, camera in black. We also sell those in white if you prefer. Um, there was some cabling, some modular plugs, uh, freehanding the cable, a couple of patch cables for the, for the, uh, uh, equipment that's going to plug into your VTEL modem. Uh, there's a couple of power injectors to power not only the camera, but also the storage device, uh, because you don't have a PUE switch onsite, powered over ethernet, so we'll put in just a couple of small injectors, uh, inexpensive injectors. Um, there was a, uh, you know, a trip charge we charged to roll the van, um, there were some miscellaneous fittings, hangers, connectors, belt rotator, et cetera, and then, uh, two of us for two hours to put it in and get it configured.
I thought when we had met, we had talked about the idea of, there was an option that you had for doing sort of a maintenance plan, like you were on call in terms of, we could set some...
Yes, so what we also do in your case, basically what we do is we, we charge $10 per device, so in your case, it would be $20 per month, and what we do is we keep all these software current and, um, uh, secure. Basically, you know, with Windows and all other applications, they're constantly, you know, finding holes, hackers are finding holes, you know, every other Tuesday, Microsoft releases security patches to plug those holes in the operating system. It's the same thing with the camera systems. We keep the firmware updated, we keep the software updated, uh, the manufacturer would be very aggressive about coming out with new features and add capabilities. Um, and, uh, and then we also keep tabs on, we set up alerts, so, uh, if the camera should go offline, we would get an alert, our help desk would get an alert, we'd call you guys, see if you lost power. If, uh, if we couldn't triage it remotely, then we would roll the van, which we charged to come out and, and triage it onsite. Uh, it's a little hard to triage this particular system remotely, because we don't have a PUE switch in this case. Um, oftentimes, let me see if I can give you an example here, let me bring up. Uh, so, um, on some other networks, let me show you, quickly show you another network here, um, what we're able to do with the system, if you add the expense of a switch, um, sorry, this is the, let me get on a different site here. Um, let's do Bear's House. Basically, the capability, when you have a switch in place, um, you have visibility into the network, and basically keeps track of everything on the network, um, what it's doing, how much data is, is passing. But what we can do is we can come into, uh, we can come into the switch, so if we were to put in a PUE switch, see if I can find it here, um, where is the good example? I know we have limited time here, so Bear Windmang switches, core switch. Okay, so on this guy, you can see, um, well, we don't have a camera plugged into this particular switch, but I can give you, this is an access point plugged into the switch. What we can do is we can come here and we can actually power cycle the power to the camera and reboot it. Um, you know, very, very occasionally, a camera will be doing software update, it won't reboot properly, and we'll have to go and just reboot it manually this way to get it back online. With the system that I designed for you, it has PUE injectors, which we have no visibility into, so to add a switch would be roughly maybe $200 to $300, depending on the switch. Um, I don't have that number right currently at the moment, but if we put a switch in, we have the capability to reboot that camera if it were to go offline, to program rolling the van, to, to triage it locally.
Frank?
Um, how much more is the, I guess it's the infrared option that tells the temperature of the road, correct?
Yeah, I believe the infrared option with the floodlight, um, we can go back and look at that, uh, it is, I think it's an additional $200 or $220 for the add-on. Um, it's actually this device right here, uh, it's the crow enhancer, and yeah, so it's about 200 bucks. We do mark this up a little bit, this is our, our channel price, so there's a markup on this price, so I would say about $200 for that device. Um, and that basically screws onto the camera, and it integrates into the mount, and has a floodlight, and, and these, and, uh, these side areas here have additional LEDs. You know, one thing we like about this camera as well is this round LED here that you see on the front, that's typically off. So as, as, as motion is detected, and perhaps a person walking by, for instance, when the camera sees that motion, if that blue light turns on and starts to spin, and the, the, the thought is, it's an attention getter, and immediately, uh, people look, they see the light out of the corner of their eye, they look at the camera, and you get a great shot of their face. So, that's very useful in some cases. Um, and also, you know, these, these cameras will allow you to, to do facial recognition. Uh, so basically, if you have a person, you can name the person, uh, here, you can give that, put this person a name, and then you can, you can tell the system, if this person comes back onsite, I want an alert on my phone. And that can be set up, that, that's set up per account. Uh, individuals can do that, um, by themselves if they have admin privileges. We can also create, you know, perhaps you would create your, all of your road crew would just be users only, so they wouldn't be able to do any type of configuration like this. They would, we'd just give them view only, uh, permission, which just, would just allow them to pull up the camera and watch the camera, essentially. They'd also be able to, you know, there is, there is sound, I don't know if that's coming through to you guys, but...
Sounds like wind.
It's a little pain, it's always snow falling, but, uh, there is sound with the cameras, and with these cameras, you can also talk out of there, um, if, if needed.
Right.
So you can speak, you can speak to someone on the road, to hay, clothes, whatever instance you can imagine, uh, you could use that for.
Do you have an example of the infrared, sort of temperature of the road, because the highway department would be wanting to see it remotely to see if there's freezing?
Oh, yes, we, we don't have, so the cameras will not give you a temperature. That would be, our manufacturer does not produce a camera that will show the temperature of an object in its view.
Is this, so, we're looking at this camera, and it obviously has a lot of great functions, but maybe a lot more so than we need just to see if there's an inch of snow, or no snow, or six inches of snow on the road. Do you have something more basic that would accomplish that?
So we could get a, a less expensive camera, um, let me go back to Max Market, um, you see, the, uh, this is a lower end camera, you'll see the picture's not quite as clear, it's a 2K, which is four megapixel. Um, the camera I quoted is a 4K, which is eight megapixel. So it's basically double the resolution, which I thought was wise, just so they could get a good view of, you know, the surface of the road and what that looks like. Uh, but you could certainly be downgraded, you could save, you know, 150 to 200 dollars downgrading the camera to just a basic bullet camera.
Okay, but everything else would need to stay the same.
Yeah, because we don't need the facial recognition, honestly, that's kind of creepy.
Right, and they, they basically chose that camera for the clarity. Um, I could certainly re-quote a different, uh, a different camera. Uh, let me see if I can find a lower eight megapixel camera, lower end eight meg- meg- megapixel camera in, in the products, and, um, I will send you a revised quote if I can locate that.
Okay, so one other question. We, we discussed having at the sewage treatment plant, which we have wifi there, however, sometimes New York State plows in front of that, so we'd get inaccurate reading. Um, if we were to try and, and have it at the firehouse, say, for instance, how could we hook into, if they had internet with that, consume very much of their internet, or...
No, it really doesn't, and most, I believe they probably have VTEL there, uh...
No.
Like the, oh, they don't.
No, VTEL doesn't run out in West Paulette. They have, they either have, um, old DSL, which is really slow, or new Fidium, which just started there.
Yeah, so, I would probably get Fidium in there, the DSL is going to be tough. Uh, the, the upload on the DSL is going to make the remote viewing very difficult.
But if you, if they have Fidium there, we could, we could have this camera tied into their system, and they would really basically not know it was taking up much space.
Yeah, um, basically, um, you know, it would be one camera, same kind of thing in the front of the building, going back into the storage device, plugging into their internet. Um, it will record to that device very easily, it won't affect their internet unless they were trying to view it from offsite.
Okay.
When they try and view it from offsite, so basically what I've seen, you know, we've been doing this a long time in the area, so we have a pretty good gauge on the speeds of the DSL, and typically, we don't see much more than a meg or two upload on the DSL, and, you know, 10 to 20 meg download. Uh, so if you're trying to do it offsite on that longer two meg upload, it's going to be very choppy, uh, it's going to be, uh, not very responsive, uh, it's going to take a minute to pull up the video. Uh, it may, it may, you know, it may buffer, I'm sure you're used to seeing that on your TV occasionally, uh, so do that same type of thing with a, with a, with a DSL connection. Um, and obviously, the, the, the Fidium is not much more money than the DSL, and it's, and, uh, I think their lowest end connection is 300 by 300, which is, um, I think, it rents maybe $79 a month, I'm not, I think the DSL is slightly lower than that in the 60s, but, uh, a far better product coming in on glass instead of copper.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what they have, and I haven't, we haven't even reached out to them to see if they would even be willing to do that, I was just trying to get some information from you.
Okay. Uh, you know, there's other options as well, you know, we use, um, cellular options, we use, um, point-to-point from another location that does have a robust internet connection. So oftentimes, what we'll do is, we have these radios, which we can mount on, on two buildings, um, that are within line of sight of each other, and we can create basically a transparent cable between the buildings and extend the internet to a second building. That may be useful, we do that in Manchester, uh, at the sewer plant, uh, to get internet down to their pump house for monitoring, um, and those point-to-points are, are very stable, very effective, and very, um, inexpensive comparatively, comparatively to, you know, laying conduit, uh, digging your trans, putting in conduit, running fiber or copper. Uh, basically, you buy two radios, put them on each building, point them on each other, configure them, and you have a cable between the buildings. So it's a very effective, effective way, so if perhaps there's another building that does have a more robust internet connection that's part of the town's infrastructure, um, it could be beamed over from that location.
Okay. Frank?
Uh, Bob, they brought this up originally, but the infrared would be very handy for the town highway department, because the screen we're looking at now, you could say that's all water, because it's, it, or ice, but, and it would be important maybe for salting to see if it's, if it's, if it's ice. And so is there any option that you know of, or, or camera that would provide the temperature of the surface of the road so that we'd know if it was actually icing up?
I'm not, I'm not aware of a camera that exists, I could certainly look, look through the channel and see if I can find something that would do that, but I, I would, I would guess that that would be a very expensive option.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Mark. Does anybody else have any questions for Mark at this point? Any members of the board? Well, we have a lot of information to mull over and stuff, and, and you're going to look and see if there's maybe a slightly more inexpensive, but, with the, with the same megapixels for the clarity, so, we'll be in touch if...
I got one more question.
Tom has one question.
When, Mark, when you said that we could use two buildings, if one's got a better signal than the other, is there a distance?
There's no dis, well, yes, there is a distance, actually, with the, with the line of equipment that we're currently using, I can shoot up to 30 miles, but I do need line of sight. I need, if it'd be any extrusions...
Because we could shoot from the sewer plant, I think.
Sorry?
Uh, we're think, we're ta, uh, sorry, we're talking, but the sewer plant is basically in line of sight with the firehouse, so that would probably work well for us.
Yeah, we could certainly shoot down there, we can shoot through a couple of branches, you know, we do have a, we have a install up in Wind Hall, where, uh, the owner didn't want to cut down the trees between the main house and the gas house, so we're shooting through the trees, and the summer, the, the connection goes down to about, about 30% integrity, but we're still passing over 100 meg, so it's still very usable, even though we have minor extrusions.
Yeah.
Uh, without extrusions, uh, with that particular radio we had, it would be 300 to 400 mags, it was reduced to 100 mags given, uh, given the obstruction. Uh, with the new radios that we're using, we can do a 1.5 gauge wireless length between the buildings.
Okay, that, that sounds like that would solve that issue. Frank's got one super quick question.
Over the West Paulette you're talking about, uh, if can, you can run it to a pole, you can run a wire to a pole that would be closer to the road and mount the camera on the pole as opposed to on, just on the building, correct?
Yes.
No, because he has it.
Yes, we have a, you know, it would have to be, you know, be, you know, conduit, you would have to be protected in some way.
No, I think you'd be, you'd be answered that, thank you. All right, well, we appreciate it very much, Mark, and we'll be in touch, and we'll go over a few more options, and we can email back and forth and go from there. Thanks for joining us tonight and answering a lot of questions for us and showing how useful that would be.
You're welcome, have a good day.
Have a good night, thank you.
You might be able to, you might run off the wifi from the...
Zoning administrator? Nancy, do you have anything for zoning administrator tonight?
Yeah, the only news that I can share is unfortunately, we did not get any of the tree removal grant. Um, the response I got from them was that there was $120,000 available in total for the state, and they got requests for over $200,000. So, uh, I guess the competition was pretty strict, and for whatever reason, we didn't meet the need. Um, the only other information I have is they've been pretty slow as far as permitting goes, where I've been spending most of my time just, um, still scanning old permits from the 90s, and I will not be in the office tomorrow, which is my regular day in.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Nancy? Thank you for that, Nancy, have a good evening. Planning commission?
Um, nothing at this, nothing new at this meeting. Um, we still are seeking two members, if any, for the planning commission. If anybody who hasn't messaged me yet is interested, send me a letter of interest, and I will send it around to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Vote for them.
So Damon, um, shared a brief report, just letting us know that the highway department has been busy with plowing... has been busy with plowing and sanding, and they've been cleaning snow around guardrails and pushing back snowbanks, and just keeping up with all the storms and weather that we've been having.
Okay, I think they're doing an excellent job, my roads never look better, so. You guys feel the same way?
Yeah, yeah, I went to Rutland today and came back, and Pol- had the best roads.
Great, thank you, that's good to hear.
Bob, did you, I know you got some feedback about, did you wanna share that now? You told me earlier today that you had some feedback about road materials that you were gonna bring to the board?
Oh.
Sanding and...
I had a, a resident, uh, asked about the, um, well, his question was why we didn't, uh, provide sand anymore, why we didn't have, uh, any sand that was potentially be available to residents if they needed to get sand, and I wanted to apply sand to their driveways, I told him I would bring it up to the board, and, um, some towns do provide a pile for residents to, uh, be able to sand their own driveways and that type of thing, get it, some don't. In the past, we, we've had, we use sand, but now we switched over to the stone, because we like the outcome a lot better, and it keeps the, the dust and everything down in the spring, so, um, I just bring it up to the board in case there's any comments.
Well, it's, it's been a valuable ask for, for some homeo- homeowners, but it turns into, oh, and there's a little bit of liability associated with people digging in a sandbank too, so it's...
To add a curiosity, stone more expensive?
Wait, Linda, Linda, you need to, um, wait.
Oh, so sorry.
Glad you were here.
To add a curiosity, is stone more expensive than sand?
I'm, I'm sorry, what is that?
The stone, the stone is a little bit more expensive than sand, but it has a, a much more, greater value, um, it's not detrimental to the road surface, and it also, like, these last few events with the rain, the snow is big enough where the sand would just get froze right over the top instantly, but the stone is still sticking out, so there's much better traction on the road.
Yeah, I, I have a nine hundred foot driveway up a hill, and I found my guy is doing stone this year, and it's way better, but I'm just curious, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Anything else for the road crew? Anything from the assessors? Town clerk?
One of the, uh, is the, um, complete permit for Bob to sign, that's it, for me.
Okay.
It's all set up, okay.
All right, anybody have any questions for Deb? All right, Deb, thanks for coming in tonight. Have a good evening.
Enjoy the beach.
Hi, um, two warrants this week, payroll's thirteen thousand, five, seven fifty-three twenty-seven, accounts payable is one million, three nine, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and sixty-five cents, which includes the second payment for school taxes. Um, the breakdown, general fund, one million, three hundred seventy-one thousand, five sixty-one, fifty-four, highway, thirty-three thousand, one hundred and nineteen, sixty-eight, and wastewater, seven thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. I left you all the tax collections, um, the delinquent tax levy that I turned over to the delinquent tax collector was two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. I did compare that to the last two years, and they were about one eighty and about one seventy, so it is a little higher than it has been in the last couple of years. And lastly, I just wanted to share that my office will be closed tomorrow.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Julie?
We'll move to approve payroll warrant two five zero four nine and accounts payable warrant two five zero five zero.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Um, Daniel's Construction, we just need to sign this for the records, Julie, or?
Yes. That was the stuff that you have sent around to me, they were being audited, and so we just need to sign our paperwork on what, on what our numbers were, and if they masked theirs, which they did.
Everybody sign, or just me?
I, I think there's only one spot, right? Or is there?
Anything else for Julie, anyone? Okay, thank you very much, have a good evening, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Let's sign the warrants.
Emergency Management, nothing this week, great. And anything from Jennifer, who's not joining us tonight? Wastewater?
We got that email from Jill.
Just the regular.
Yeah, it was just regular stuff.
And the, uh, the application has gone in, what did you send us around, we need to look that application over for the upgrade.
Yeah, the, the, um...
Sent that out to us this year.
Yeah, the company that is working on the options for the sludge tank upgrade, sent us around their preliminary report, and also, um, Mike, they sent around a doodle poll for when we could meet next, as those folks in Rutland Regional Planning Commission and us, and Jill. I think there were like five different options they had come up with.
I didn't end up seeing that.
Yeah, I didn't, um, I didn't look at the report yet, but I did see that they listed there was like, do nothing, repurpose the one tank, do a couple different kinds of tanks, so there were several options.
They went from doing nothing to one point three million or something like that for the slime tank.
Which, you know, well, I didn't, I didn't see with the figures on it, so I'll have to look through it more, please, but yeah.
Was that ERPA?
No.
No, that's a whole different...
No, this, this is all being paid for by some money that Rutland Regional Planning Commission got from the state, so it has enough, not even, the town doesn't have to show up for this, I mean, when we build it, we'll have to show up, but...
All the, all this engineering work is, is done under that.
Yep.
And the only thing I know, they're having trouble with one of the heaters or something, but the technician's working on that, and as far as I know. Facilities report, anything from any of the buildings?
Um, the only thing is, I got an email from Sue, what's the person's name again? I forget the, um...
Meg Campbell.
Meg Campbell, wants to come around again this week to look at the buildings, so I'm, and Sue and I both got the email, and I'm gonna see if I can get together with her, and if I can't, Sue is willing to do that, so.
Great, thank you.
She's historic preservation.
She's historic preservation.
Could I pony in with that, because of the MRF thing, I'd like to, 'cause you and I were gonna be working on that, 'cause this is, you're gonna have to tie those people in right at the start.
We have yet decided who's working on that, um, on the big MRF grant, you were working on the, on the little, um, cameras, but...
That, that would be something that you have questions about the MRF grant, you would need to talk to Ms. Campbell at, on a, on a case basis, not when she's come down here for a specific task, not to deal, not to deal with your questions about that, that's a separate subject.
Let me bring this up to a sec, for, at this point in time, is that the MRF project, because we, we were told, we, I brought it up before, when they says, oh, you know, you can do this energy retrofit and all this stuff, and I says, what about historical competitive patient trust? Oh, we haven't asked them yet, you know, we didn't think about them, so...
Exactly, that's why you need to reach out to Meg Campbell, have a separate conversation, not, not at this one.
Or, or where we are at this point, is that the Rutland Regional guy says that they would have to coordinate, so the question is, is, would we, would we, would be, would we be coordinating from the get-go, might be better than just, than...
But you need to reach out, she's not coming down, she doesn't care about any of that, she wants to look at, she has a specific reason for coming down, you need to reach out to Meg Campbell, set up an arrangement for you and her to discuss the MRF program, this individual of this...
You're, 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 you're gonna be on this, right?
Probably, since I have been talking to Rutland Regional Planning Commission about it, but we haven't yet set up the team that's gonna work on this grant. Um, I, I went to a previous, since we're kinda jumping ahead in time, we're talking about this grant, um, I went to the most recent library board meeting, and the library board of trustees would like to have one of their members be involved with the group that's going to work on this project, so I'm assuming it'll involve a select board member, probably me, I'm willing to continue doing it since I've been working on it, and somebody from the library, and then I don't know if we want to have someone from the planning commission, if it was, that would probably be Frank, who seems very interested in it, but we, it'll be up to the select board to decide then who's gonna be on this team to work on the MRF grant, and I did have a little update on that, which I will give in old business.
The, the, the historic preservation trust people have a veto ability, and so, instead of being down the road planning stuff...
Yes, that, what I'm trying to say, Frank, you're not really listening very clear, you need to set up an appointment with Meg Campbell and tell her what you're wanting to do, separate of her visit that she has planned here. Her visit she has planned here has nothing to do with the MRF program, that needs to be a whole separate conversation, thank you.
Okay, gotcha.
I'm gonna take this from you now.
Meadowwee School Board?
Nothing for tonight.
Nothing for tonight, all right. The, the Meadowwee School Board meeting is coming up next week, right, in Rupert?
Believe so.
Still here, Julie?
I literally just put food in my mouth.
Great timing, Mike.
But I am technically here.
Is the Meadowwee School Board meeting next week?
Thursday.
The school board meeting, the annual meeting.
Yep, the annual meeting is February twenty-sixth, which is Wednesday, and it is in Rupert, and it's at seven p.m.
Is there any electronic ways to watch up?
No, it is, um, it is in person.
No way.
Is that, is that even legal?
No.
Okay, Wednesday night, in Rupert, thank you, Julie, and Deb. Older unfinished town, town property surveying. Tom, you have some more questions about that?
Yeah, well, Sue was nice enough to send us some information, and after, after looking through it, and also Julie sent us an email, um, there's some properties that definitely has not been surveyed, and there is some property that looks like it might be joint, and part of it's surveyed and part of it's not.
Oh, okay.
Like in West Pol- it looks like the quarries was surveyed, but not the dump, and I, I guess, I didn't dig into that any further to see that, but I didn't know if the board wanted to look at, to prevent us from getting in any situation down the road, is we should look at having surveyors put it out to bid to survey the town properties, um, and give them a list, uh, there was ten that are on here.
Ten parcels of?
Ten parcels total, and, and I'm not sure on, you know, if par- if that one is partially done, and there was some that were done, uh, there was one, two, three that were done, but I think we oughta at least, if we're having a surveyor come in to bid this, that we oughta have them verify it and make sure that those are...
Complete?
Complete and documented.
Right, yep.
And filed properly, um, you know, like the gravel pit is not, does not show it's been surveyed.
The gravel, I think that's the one where I, it was sur- it was surveyed, but it hasn't been filed yet, and so it looked like it wasn't surveyed, and then I looked on top of the file, and there were, it was there.
And that's because we...
Oh, it's all right.
We are, we're waiting to file it, because there's been the question about getting the right of way, why?
We're trying to negotiate a larger access point?
Yep.
So we, we didn't have them file it until, and make the other final maps, until we were able to secure that.
That's the only one that's recently been surveyed, so any other town parcels that haven't been surveyed, we know they weren't. Which ones have probably been surveyed?
So we'd have to compile, compile a list, so that we could put out to surveyors, but I mean, there's, there's quite a lot of property there, I don't know that we're willing to, we have that kinda money to do it all at this point?
Yep.
You know, maybe we should get a list together and kinda look over them and see which ones make the most sense.
Well, my biggest concern was the gravel pit, because we're talking about doing something, but, so, but if you got that, and it's just not being completed, then, that was my biggest concern.
It's, it's been on hold just, just until we can establish a, a larger access for it.
I'm sorry, Bob, Tom, I...
Just as a...
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't make that clear, obviously.
And the reason why the surveying came up was because, since, so, since we're not using the funding for the pedestrian safety grant, Julie, a couple of months ago now, had recommended that we take those funds, or utilize some of those funds to survey town owned properties, just to be sure as we're moving forward, if there's any other projects that come up, or just, like Tom was saying, in general, to have complete and on file to make sure, so, since we have those funds, not sure what the board plans to do with those, but that could be a potential way to utilize them.
But no, I appreciate Julie looking into it, and Sue looking into it, to share what properties with the board that we should be looking at, so...
I, I think that's a good idea, that we, we keep moving on this, but maybe, maybe what we need to kinda do is look that list over again and try and compile a...
Prioritize?
Prioritize, yeah. So, we could keep, look at, one of us, that some of us have time to look at that list and, and put some ideas out for what we may or may not feel is, would be the most important ones to do.
Yeah, 'cause I, I find it interesting that, that quarry was done, but the dump wasn't done, I would think the dump would've been done back.
It seems like it should've been done when it was all purchased. Right, and the purchase, and when we purchased it back.
So maybe it's more just digging in deeper, I, I don't know how you would find it or not find it, so...
I just, I just looked through the cards, and I, um, of town property, I, I just looked through the cards of town property, and, um, and then tried to cor- to cross-reference them with what we have on file for, um, surveys, but, um, yeah, that was all.
Frank?
Yeah, you'd have to go deeper.
The money that Kristen was mentioning was about how much money, and would it cover all the survey work that you need?
Well, that's why we prioritize it, and start to have some discussions and, and go in that direction.
How much money is it, that would be?
We don't have those numbers right now at this time, but...
Can I just, quick, say something to that? I think Frank was asking how much is extra money that we aren't using on a project, and it's the amount of money that we're not spending on sidewalks, which would absolutely, I would assume, cover the entire cost of surveying, even if you did all of them, whether they've been surveyed or not. I know there is a property in this town that was surveyed, and then there was a second survey done by a butter, and they are now in conflict, because the second survey showed the first one to be inaccurate, so like, it might be worth considering doing all of them, and there is money that you're not using on a project that you could use on this, so it won't cost the taxpayers anything.
Okay, well, thank you, Julie.
I mean, two of them are cemeteries. You know, I mean, they're, not, it, not to be disrespectful here, but they're not top on the list because who's gonna be building next to a cemetery or burning up or nothing. But like the town barn over here, you know? And one, the pallet barn, and then the dump.
The pallet barn's been done.
And the land trusts, I believe funded that one.
Right. Because there was a, there was a discrepancy.
Well...
Alright, well, then we'll dig into it.
So, we could, we could do a...
Was it one line?
Yeah, I think it, I think they surveyed the neighboring... I thought it was the neighboring that farm.
Oh, now, now if they surveyed the neighbor, I don't know about it.
Right.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe one's just... I can go back through the emails, because Donna Campbell, they'd emailed all that.
My guess is, is it's ARPA funds that have to be used up, so no matter what, you wouldn't want to be frugal, you, you're gonna use all that funding, correct?
Well, we technically sorted that out already. So...
My wish I made to that, we all the way sorted it out because we counted the money as being spent paid towards prior year expenses. So we have technically spent all of our ARPA money.
Yep, we just have other money that it kind of offset. Yeah.
So now, is there any, any more on this, we'll just, just keep working on this project, Julie?
Do you want?
Kristen!
Would you like to revisit this or is this something?
Yeah, I think we should keep this, this project going and try and come up with, try to prioritize or something like that.
So next meeting, talk about a priority of which properties we'd like to perhaps survey.
Is there a copy of this for all of us?
Well, it's pretty, it's pretty wrong.
Okay, I'll check.
It's pretty wrong, so, it's...
Nope.
Well, I'll check.
I think it came from that one. Oh, you're right. You clarified it, you said you weren't a hundred percent accurate, so that's fair.
Well, I, I thought I was better than that, but, I mean, um...
But this is our thing, is we want to dig down into it and figure out what's right and what's wrong.
To take it all out so we know for sure. Now, you, you got, you got the ball started doing very well.
Thank you very much for that, so.
I appreciate it.
You know, you know work needs to be done.
Well, we'll add it again to continue to discuss it.
Anything else under older unfinished business?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to update on the MERC grant, which we ended up talking about a little bit earlier. I can't recall if I brought this up at the last meeting, um, and I didn't see it in the minutes, so I don't think I did, that the status on the MERC grant right now is that Rutland, and Rutland Regional Planning Commission is willing to put in the RFP for it. Um, and they were talking about how they might put in an RFP. No, I think I brought this up at the library meeting. They were talking about how they might put in an RFP for, um, like for all the towns together that are gonna do it. Did, did I mention this already or not?
You did it elaborately.
Not at...
Not, not to you folks, okay, so, that's why it's ringing a bell for me, yeah, um. So, the person on Rutland Regional Planning Commission who's working on it messaged me and said that they were considering, he's not sure if this is gonna work out, but if, if he, it would, he thought it would be, might be a good idea and just wanted me to run it past everyone and make sure nobody's really against it. Um, the idea would be that when Rutland Regional Planning Commission would put out an RFP for a firm to do, basically to figure out what we need to do, um, well, to, to design whatever we need to design. Like if we're going to put in extra insulation and stuff to figure out how much it has to be and all that kind of thing. Um, and then also with the HVAC stuff. He was thinking that we might want to do an RFP together with all the towns that are gonna be doing the same kind of work, that, in, in Rutland County, they got MERC grants. I think it was eight towns. And then if we were to hire the same firm for all those towns, we might get an economy of scale. Basically, they might give a discount for having done all the towns. Now, this RFP that would be put out would be pretty generic. It would list all the things that the grant, um, that the grant mentioned, which would be the insulation and the stuff with the, um, with the envelope of the building, the HVAC stuff. And it would probably also list EV charging and solar panels, even though we're probably not gonna do that with our grant. And then whatever company was going to bid on this would bid on it, um, at the time when they got the bid, we would then go into details with them on what specific things each town wanted to do. So then each town would negotiate separately with this company, whichever company it might be, on the specifics. I think I got that right.
Yeah, every town's...
Does it, does it, does it make sense that they would do that?
Do a big RFP for a bunch of towns?
Absolutely.
Okay, 'cause I, I initially said, I thought it sounded like a good idea, but I would run it past all of you. So that, I haven't heard back yet if that's a goal, that they're gonna do it that way. But either way, the Regional Planning Commission can write the RFP for us and, um, and do an initial screening of firms, so.
That sounds like a good start.
Alright, I will just get back with them and let them know that that sounds like a good. That's all I got on that.
Anything else? New business?
So I don't have too many specifics for you yet in terms of computer models. Started to look into them, but I do know that the budget that the town has to work with right now for purchasing for computers is about ten thousand dollars, which is ample, sure. I would not need to spend that much on a computer. So I just haven't had an opportunity to pull any together, but talking with Frank a little bit additionally, I think it does seem like a good idea that this computer go onto the planning commission. Frank and I are going to get together to do a little tra, quick little training course on how to utilize this system, um, which is, you'll find is a breeze. Um, but I do think that it's somewhere, I mean, depending on the computer, some, it's somewhere in like the thirteen hundred dollar ballpark is probably what we're looking at for a laptop. So really, and just, you know, full transparency, just kind of considering whether or not, I've always been an Apple person and then I've been using this Dell for the last couple of years, so I've just been kind of looking back and forth between whether or not, um, between those two. So I'll keep you posted, I just kind of had a busy week last week, so. But I did, Julie, thank you for pulling up the budget. So it does seem like there's, there's budget enough and with plenty to be left over in case anybody else needs any sort of tech advances this year.
Okay, so the only thing else is the rec card. Don Campbell would like to have a copy of the vote that we took, what, two weeks, two meetings ago?
That motion?
Right, the motion and the vote that we took that said that we did not want to have any participation.
Published, um, but I can email it to him directly.
Yeah, well, I think that's was the last thing, because he's seen some stuff going on and he wanted to know for sure that...
I can send him an email with the copy from the minutes, the motion.
Yeah, I think that would, then he would have the, the document and this, because he's, he's seen some emails that some, some people are, would still like the dog park and wanted to know the official's town status and, uh, the rec card there at, on Route thirty that we voted to not support.
Yeah, and we voted to not support it because it seemed like Rupert wasn't gonna support it and we don't want to go it alone to support it.
Exactly, it could...
I mean, if people really wanted to support it, they could get together a nonprofit and then they could support it, like how the nonprofit did in the past.
That would be something that they would need to talk to Don Campbell about.
Exactly.
Anything else under?
Two farmers.
Two farmers, sorry. Oh, okay.
Yeah, and the land is conserved, which is why the Vermont Land Trust is involved.
Right, okay, correct.
If there's no other new business, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
We didn't do, we didn't...
There is no, oh, there's, I crossed it out when I crossed out the executive section.
Just crossing out public comments.
I've got three short questions.
Yeah.
And the whole world needs to hear them, no. Um, Daniel, I heard you say Daniels, they have that chain link fence still down there, are they gonna pick that up or who's?
Where, by the bridge?
Yeah, there's a chain link fence where they had, uh, they had chemicals in there and stuff and paint and stuff and they, they took that away, but the chain link fence and a tarp are still there.
Can we chat, Tom?
Okay. Um, and as far as the cameras for weather, when we were seeing Gibby's, um, little hut on the outside of the store, I thought, oh, you could just put a big thermometer there, not there, but you know, wherever your camera is going. And, and just, and just, you know, for
Reference.
For fourteen dollars, you could know what the temperature was.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's a very clever sound. I, yeah, after that other thing. Um, and you know, um, and the frost heaves on the circle here, uh, on the town, around this town green in front of Judy Coolidge's house, have you driven over them?
I just did tonight.
Okay, so, you know what I'm saying? Okay, um, I don't...
Speed bumps?
Oh, they're, uh, one of them's really deep and, and awkward. Um, so somebody should just look at them and then maybe by spring they'll be gone, but you know, if they're not, we could lose...
Identify them maybe just for the short term.
To look at.
Because there's really nothing that couldn't be done at this point.
Right, right.
Okay.
But they are, they are impressive, that's all.
Anybody else? Thank you.
The federal government, as far as green projects are concerned and grants, we are going to be watching that. And I'm going to talk to Efficiency Vermont and, and some other folks as to what they're reading on it is right now, and we'll report back. And this would be concerning to towns folks and to potentially projects that, you know, that the planning commission will be looking forward to doing and the sec board as far as energy efficiency. But the money's there for the MERC.
It should be. I, as far as I know, Frank, as far as I know.
Okay.
The state has the money as far as I know.
Everybody else?
If there's no other public comment, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Owe? Carried.